Are we rolling, Angela?
Six o'clock.
Well, I believe you, but it's that's still. Okay, we'll call the Tremont Pining Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 28th order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, we have Renee Hodgson, Brett Witham, Beth Cox, Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, CEO Angie Chamberlain, Board Attorney Patrick Lyons, and members of the public. Just an option on the agenda, I'd like to, so, under old business, I'd like to switch B before A, so that Mr. Lyons doesn't have to stick around for our discussion on the solar definitions, and he can get home to his family and save the town a few bucks.
Appreciate it.
So I take a motion to that effect if somebody would like that.
I will still move.
And I will second.
Okay, motion and second to, under old business, put B, item B before item A. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Minutes, they looked okay to me, anybody see anything? And Angie, great job, very thorough.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of January 14th, 2025. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Brett's gonna have to abstain, right? You weren't here. Okay. Okay. Findings of fact, or the draft findings of fact, for the Pointy Head Campground, there was a little change from what you initially got in your packets, and Patrick and Angie got them to us here tonight, and that change was in the first paragraph of the background, changing the words cabins to sheds. Think that was the only change, right, gang? Patrick? Yeah. And we basically need to vote to approve these and sign them, correct? I did notice the page number didn't get corrected.
It didn't on my end.
What, the five to four?
And Angie was messing with it, wasn't she?
I don't know what's going on. You can blame the new law firm technology. My end.
Wait, wait, we can't blame the lawyer, the new law firm technology, okay.
Never my fault.
Should we amend that, then?
Yeah, you can cross it. I would just cross it out and then issue it. We'll need one official signed copy.
Yeah, official copy, I don't know if Angie made something on.
I think you make it on the special paper.
It doesn't need to be on the special paper.
Oh, okay, okay.
The town will keep the original, I'll just need a scanned copy.
Okay, and Brett, since you weren't here, you have to abstain once again.
Missed all the fun, yeah.
Yeah, you missed all the fun. If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion to approve the notice and decision order for Pointy Head Campground.
Make a motion to reject the notice and decision order.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the notice and decision order for Pointy Head Campground. Once again, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, okay, all we have to do is sign that, right, sir?
Yes, please, and then you give it to the code enforcement officer, she can send me a scanned copy, I'll provide that to council for the parties that were involved.
Okay.
And then we'll have that in your records.
Want to use my copy here as the official, then, okay? And I'll page five of six, yeah. Five of six. Six of six. This one needs next. Pass it down to Renee, please, sir. Review and discussion of proposed solar definitions, as you may recall, a while back, Sustainability Committee came before us and they weren't.
That was correct.
What's that?
Nothing, thank you very much.
Thanks, Patrick, okay? We'll be seeing you, I'm sure.
Maybe.
Yeah. Came before us and they were concerned that what we had in our definitions would not allow someone producing extra solar, extra electricity to then award those credits to another person. So we asked the town attorney to take a look at it, and think, it's a little confusing what he has said here.
You think?
Yeah, well, yeah, but I think the long and short of it is, he just recommended deleting that one line, primary, primarily, or solely for onsite commercial use, which we talked about at that last meeting, when we discussed it.
Well, that concept is carried throughout each definition, right?
It's only in two, right? It's in, it's not in the industrial, it's in the residential and commercial, so for, yeah.
So you're looking at the wrong red line, but I see red lines in industrial, I see red lines in residential, and I see red lines in commercial.
Well, we have it in industrial and.
Residential, you have a red.
Yeah, so in industrial, primarily or solely for offsite utility grid uses.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right, I did.
And then in residential solar, primarily or solely for onsite is stricken, although residential use is still there, how do we, how do you, what that means, I have no idea. But we can, I don't, I'll tell you right at the gate, I don't like what he did, but we can talk about it.
Okay, well, tell us why you don't like it.
Because, look, the whole, as I had said before, the reason we had initially, this goes back like a year, the reason we had initially brought in the concept of the use of the power was because with small, you know, residential generating sites, we did not want there to be postage stamp, like, you wanted that, that, that to be an accessory to a residential use, like, you wanted it to be connected to a residence. Because you did not, we did not want, like, a small little postage stamp solar arrays feeding into the grid. And I don't, I don't, I don't know how you, in the revision here, I mean, just focusing, just focus right now on residential solar energy system.
Okay.
It says it's for residential use, how do you, if they're, if they're putting power to the grid, how do you know where, how do you specify that that would be for residential use only, or how did, it's not, like, the onsite's off, right? It's deleted, the onsite, that's no longer, it's stricken from the definition. So now it's just power for residential use, and I don't even know, like, what does that mean? What do they mean? Like, like, only there, or it can be supplied to the grid for only residential use? Like, how do you, how do you do that? And I, you know, frankly, I, the way, the way it was written initially, primarily or solely, primarily suggests that most of the power will be used, if it's, if it's an array on a residence, most of the power will be used by the residence. It doesn't suggest, it doesn't mean that all of it has to be used by the residence. You could have power that's sent to the grid, so I, I guess I'm still, I don't know why we're making.
It's the way we looked at it.
Anyway, so I've said my piece, I, you know, I don't know what, what the, you know, I agree, I think he uses the word wonky here, I think what he's done is kind of wonky, but I, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what it means in the end, I think what it means, though, is that basically, we're just saying, we're now just regulating it by size, and it doesn't matter what its use is, so I think that does, I think you could theoretically have very small arrays that are not connected to a residence, that are on property and feeding the grid. Show me where we couldn't have that, like, what would prohibit that from here?
Now, I know Kevin was one of the prime objectors of what we had, and so, how would you respond to that, Kevin?
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna see a bunch of scattered small arrays.
But I don't, I don't care what you think, what does the rules allow? What do you think?
Well, what, what happens is, when you generate solar energy, it goes into the grid if you're not using it right there. The grid acts like a battery, basically. It goes into the grid and gets used by whoever's demanding it at the time. I mean, as far as commercial use, there isn't much commercial use around this area in town. But I mean, anyway, you don't really speculate that, basically, you get credits if you're not using it at the time, when you use it, when, in the evening, when the sun's not out, those credits go back to you.
Yeah, but doesn't, that's not, my issue is that you, under these rules now, you can have someone put a small array on a piece of land, call it a residential sol, as long as it's up to a total of 2,500 square feet, call it residential solar, not have a residence there at all, and, and put power to the grid, under what we have.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I, I think that's correct, yes.
Don't, I have words to do with definitions, I'm sorry, I could just pick it up, but would then make it industrial by the definition?
Why?
We're just getting, where no one's using it onsite.
But that's all stricken, that's all been stricken. That's a long part of the rule.
Well, I thought it wasn't under the industrial, that's what I was.
No, that's all, it's all been stricken.
He's right, I was wrong when I said it wasn't under industrial.
Okay. If that's what people want to do, that's fine, but that's what that will do, that's what that will allow.
That's not what we want.
I don't, I didn't think so.
That wasn't the aim of what we were trying to do.
No, well, this is what this will allow people to do.
I have to look at, I was looking through, I haven't seen the actual definition of the residential.
You want, you want to take a look?
Well, I think I've got it. Mark just picked up the cross package.
So by crossing out what our town lawyer has suggested, it's defeated what we wanted?
Well, I, I think now what it says is that it's just defined by size, and it doesn't matter, you know, so you could have, you could have, you know, the different sizes on a piece of property, and.
And no residence.
And no residence, and they could be feeding the grid, and, because I don't know how you, even though it says residential, the only, the only connection now in the definition is for, for residential use, but if you're putting that back into the grid, how do you know how it's gonna be used? There's no way, like, it's, it's meaningless, it's meaningless now.
I think one of the things he's trying to say is, okay, under residential solar, what we wanted to do was say, if I wanted to put an array on my roof, that's a residential solar.
Right.
System, okay? The concern was, I might produce more power than I use.
Right.
And then I might want to give those credits to you.
Okay, yeah, and we had no problem with that.
Okay, but, but that wording that we had was objected to by members of the Sustainability Committee, and we agreed that we'd take a look at making it, word it, word it better so that did meet, actually allow what they wanted.
Does it require, I don't have the full.
But I think what's happened here is the, by striking that, it says, supply electrical or thermal power for residential use, and consisting of one or more freestanding, it doesn't say anything about them having to be on the residential.
So we need to put back.
I don't recall if the rest of the regulatory scheme requires that the residential, the residential solar system be accessory to, you know, necessarily be accessory to a residence. I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it does, and, and I think the way that we did it was, we required that the use be primarily or solely for residential use, that's kind of how we did it, it was a rough, kind of rough justice way of doing it. And so if you take that out, then you're just, you're just, you know, you're just doing it by size, and it doesn't matter, it's no, there doesn't have to be actually a residence there. Hate to be the one to.
No, I think you have.
But I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, I agree too, but I don't know how to fix it.
Well, you could, I mean, there's two ways, right? You either make it, you either gotta bake it in so that it's, it necessarily needs, needs to be an accessory to a residential, you know, do it that way, or you keep the, you know, the wording that we have, and say something like, you know, notwithstanding the, the use restriction, or something like that, you know, a residential unit can nevertheless feed power back to the grid that it's not using for the residence, and you would just do it that way.
Are they called credits, is that correct?
Yeah, they're called net energy billing.
Net energy billing, so if we said something like, just added.
Yeah.
Forget, forget the strikeout.
Yeah, just leave it there.
Add an extra sentence that says.
Yeah, just for clarity, or something, you know, we, this is not intended to, you know, prohibit a residential solar energy system and an owner from whatever that is, selling credits or whatever, you have to put some language there to, so that it says you can feed it back to someone. The primarily or solely, but the primarily piece is where it's not, you know, there is room there for, to send it back to the grid, and I think we could just leave that language and add a, you know, notwithstanding the foregoing, you know, owners may feed power back to the grid, and we could work with, you know, there's some expertise right here in the room, frankly, to come up with that language, and I think it'd probably do a better job than what we've done, we've got here.
Ms. Chamberlain, any thoughts on that? With all your many years of experience.
Yeah, well, we could help with some solar, but I don't know how you would determine that it's for residential use, so I'm not sure using that term is really necessarily helpful. I do think if you say that it has to be accessory to another use or a residence, that sort of connects it together, and it's not just a standalone use, and do we really care if you send your credits to your camp and you use it for your house? I mean, it's got a size limit anyways, so you're only gonna generate so much anyways. I haven't spent a lot of time looking at this, so I, you know, I'm not really well-versed in it, but.
Yeah, I think you've either gotta leave the onsite piece, what does it say? You know, onsite residential use, or you build in, you know, it's gotta be an accessory, an accessory use, or something like that, and that, that will hopefully, you know, keep it guardrails, so that you don't have a sort of standalone, little tiny little, and I know maybe the economics don't make sense now, they might someday, where people can put a very small array, and it's not connected to a residence. But I think that was one of the things that we talked about.
Mark?
Yeah, go, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's the word I was looking for, I think it says we're used, I mean, I think that answers what everyone's looking for, you know, and I know the size limit made sense, so someone won't be putting a huge array on, but basically, you want it to get used as, you know, for that location, it's really hard when you say it's gonna be used onsite or something like that, you know, it gets into a policing or enforcement.
Right, right, you can't, I guess, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if you make it so residential's an accessory use, that makes sense, I mean, I think everyone's happy with that, and I think that does what you're looking for. That way, if I've got an empty lot that I'm gonna be thinking, oh, I can't just go throw a residential array on it, because.
Right, that's.
That's what he's trying to say, this would allow.
Trying to like, kind of close that down, so we're in agreement, I think we go back to James, or we can probably come up with something, I can look at it and try to.
Might not be quite as wonky.
Wonky. This is our town lawyer?
You know, I, I look at, I'll, let me.
Talk to slick.
Let me look at it, I don't have, you know, I can look at it and try to figure out how we, how you make it, how you loop in the accessory use requirement. Maybe you just say it's part of the definition.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You, I was gonna say, do you wanna table this and pick it up on our next meeting when we have time to, if anybody come up with something?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does that make sense, folks?
I think everyone's in agreement, I think we know we're trying to, you know, so, sure.
Well, maybe we should take a motion to that effect, then.
I will postpone it until next meeting, when we can reword it to meet the.
Maybe use the word table.
Table.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second on the table.
Very good.
To table. The solar definitions, until our next, taking action on the solar definitions until our next meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think we can come up with something. Brett, good, I'm glad you caught that, that makes sense.
Yeah, we talked about it, we'll get it last time.
Okay, review and possible discussion of suggested amendments to the subdivision ordinances prepared by the Friends of Tremont and Locust Point, and I hope you folks are, code enforcement officer was.
Very helpful.
Very helpful in preparing these comments and this memorandum for us, and I thank her for it personally, and I'd like to go on record, it's thanking her for doing such a great job. Anybody want to make any comments or anything about this before we get into it? Taking it item by item, I guess. I'll make a comment. I think I find in general, the proposed changes lack specific standards that would be enforceable, and that they're counter to the comprehensive plan's goal to encourage affordable housing. I also think they ignore the fact that a subdivision is more than just defined by lots, could be the number of dwelling units, I mean, I find it's possible to have a greater number of units on two or three lots, and have a greater impact than four, a four-lot subdivision, so, as I mentioned to Mr. Madira at our meeting. So, okay, let's take them one by one. Yeah, thank you. Under Article 1B, administration of subdivision or four more lots is considered a large subdivision. As Angie's pointed out here, that we do have existing definitions for minor and major subdivisions in Article 4, and she feels it's not necessary because of that. Was that in land use? Yes.
Actually, it's in the subdivision ordinance.
What's that?
It's in the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, I thought it was two, but, okay.
13.
Oh, under definitions, yes, in subdivision, it is, yes, correct. A major subdivision is any subdivision that does not qualify as a minor subdivision. A minor subdivision is a subdivision that qualifies as a subdivision under Article 1B, consisting of an aggregate of four or fewer lots in any tenure period, no part of which is located in or buts the resource protection zone, and no part of which is in the water sheds of Hodgson or Silco ponds, and in which no road is proposed to be constructed. Any thoughts? Do we need this?
No.
Not hearing anything, so we can move on. Unless somebody wants me to read.
Are you under 1B, 1B2? Is sufficient water?
Well, did I miss, skip over that one?
No, I was looking at something else, where are you?
I was under 1B, any subdivision or four more lots is considered a large subdivision, okay?
Okay, okay.
So, we already have definitions of minor and major subdivisions.
Okay, I see it now, okay.
We okay?
Yeah.
I don't know if you're thinking or not, there. Oh, okay, okay, Lark?
Yeah, we've already got that.
Yeah, we got that, so, sufficient water. The adequacy of the aquifer to support the proposed number of residential lots shall be addressed through an engineering study, as Ms. Chamberlain points out, we do have water supply performance standards currently in 8A. Set up subdivision or luau.
I think that's in the subdivision, I think everything's in the subdivision.
Everything that you mentioned, okay.
And it is in 8A.
Which, of course, we look at every time.
Yes.
As, Mr. Madira, is there a reason you don't think what we have is adequate?
I think the hydro fracking is the real issue that we want to talk about.
Yeah, this also does hydro fracking, okay, my understanding of hydro fracking of wells is that if you have a well that's not producing as much water as it should, that. not producing as much water as it should, that there's a possibility of shooting high pressure water down into that well, cracking the, the the rock, whatever, and allowing more water to flow into the well, correct?
That's right. The issue came up as we did our research and talked with a geologist from University of Maine, or I guess it was the state geologist, talking about hydro fracking within the shoreline zone, which can allow seawater to go into the, into the well.
Right. And certainly wells, just a drill, it could happen to any drilled well, not just one that's been hydro fracked.
But specifically in shoreline zone, you're 250 feet back from the, from the from the saltwater. That's what, that's what we were really trying to get to.
We're requiring, but how you're getting there is requiring an engineering study? Is that? You're not proposing a language that addresses hydro fracking?
I'm not gonna defend necessarily the language, but we're trying to open this discussion. Basically, the geologists that we talked to advised against hydro fracking within the shoreline zone.
This is the limited residential shoreline zone.
Correct.
That's fine, you're not proposing a language that prohibits hydro fracking, you are proposing a language that, I think, what you're saying is, they need, they need an engineering study on water supply?
Well, that would be part of it too.
So, this is not just for subdivisions, then? Or are you specifically subdivisions within the limited residential shoreline, shoreline zone?
The original the original discussion started with subdivisions, but I think a lot of this flows over into the land use ordinance.
But this is, but what you're proposing here is just for subdivisions?
Correct.
You originally came up with these because of what was happening on Lopez Point, correct?
That's right.
You know, it says here, it says, what now hydro geological assessment was submitted, but when, when does that trigger, does anybody know?
See, what now?
It talks about impact on groundwater, it's under like.
21, 33, and subdivision.
8, 8, yeah. It talks about.
Hydrogeologic assessment.
Yeah, when do we, it says when was submitted, but like, when?
What?
What triggers that?
Why were you so opposed to the Lopez Point subdivision? Proposed Lopez Point subdivision?
Are we, are we talking about the, what's on the agenda tonight, or do you wanna talk about that in general?
Well, nobody can go there.
See, you proposed this.
Right.
When we were looking at the Lopez Point subdivision.
No, well, the Lopez Point subdivision, you know, let's, let's look at a little history here. A year ago, we had two storms back to back, and basically there was a river running across the Lopez Point causeway. In May, we approved the comprehensive plan, which talks about a number of issues, including future housing development. And and then in May, in June, the, the Lopez Point property was sold to a, to a developer who promptly put together a subdivision plan on Lopez Point. So, that sort of triggered a whole series of questions that, was the land use ordinance and the subdivision ordinance adequate to protect the town against inappropriate development?
But what, why did you think it was inappropriate development?
Well, I, I can show you a video of what the Lopez Point.
No, I know what it looked like after the storm.
We know there's flooding there, but that's a town road, that's an infrastructure problem, not a subdivision problem.
Well.
I mean, should, address Slickman and, and perhaps they could do something about fixing that problem, I don't know, it has nothing to do with the planning board, does it? And subdivisions?
I mean, you just was trying to stop a subdivision from going in there, which is, it's not gonna be a subdivision anymore, but I'm just trying to figure out why? Why you're trying to? Well, I'm just confused as to, you want us to change everything because of what was gonna happen in Lo, at Lopez Point?
Well, as we, as we looked through the subdivision ordinance, and yes, the Lopez Point proposal was triggered for it, but we, as we looked through the ordinance, we saw some things that might be applicable throughout the town, and that's what this is really about.
Okay, so this hydro fracking that you wanna put, this is specifically what you're asking is in the limited residential shoreline zone?
Correct.
So, shouldn't that go into the part of the land use ordinance that addresses the limited residential shoreline zone?
Well, I'm, I'm no expert on developing planning documents, but, but it seems like it could, and, but you're the experts on this, so if you think it, that's a better place for it, then I'd say I would support that.
But you're, you're not even proposing any, anything about fracking, you're just, you want or require an engineering study, is what I, how I read your request.
I think that is actually in two parts. One is the engineering study to support, to check the adequacy of the aquifer, and then the second part is the hydro fracking issue, which is within the shoreline zone.
So, what it says is, the adequacy of the aquifer to support the proposed number of residential lots should be addressed through an engineering study because hydro fracking may allow saltwater to intrude in the freshwater, so the because is not, that's not like a, that's not a transition, that word because, it's not supporting the reason for an engineering study?
The catch probably is even better.
Okay, so, like, I think the problem, we don't know what to do with this, when it's like, you know, I, I'll, I'll stop.
Yes?
So, I just wanted to add that, that one of the things in the Tremont Resilience Plan, one of the things is to be aware of saltwater intrusion into wells as these one, used to be one, 100-year storms, right? The ones we had, they're now like the one in 10-year storms coming. The FEMA plant map, the firm map, has now, it shows the one in 100, now the one in 10-year.
So, should we just prohibit all development in the, in the shoreline, is that what we should do, you think?
Well, I'm just, I, just when I'm relating to this, is the saltwater intrusion.
Right, so because of that, should we now stop all development that's near the shoreline? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm just saying it's, I'm just bringing awareness to that.
That's great, but awareness is great, but what does it mean, what do you want us to do?
I'm just, I'm not saying to do anything, I'm not part of that, I'm just saying that it can be worth an engineering study if anyone, anyone might be building near the shoreline.
Well, the person who's building isn't gonna wanna hydro frac if they, you know, if there's a chance that saltwater is going to go into their well, it's just a waste of their money, and, and homeowner would be aware of that.
And it's just that, you know, hydro fracking may cause additional problems, but a dr, common drilled well can get saltwater incursion, or.
Yes, yes.
Former town CEO had to drill two wells in his property in Lemoyne because of just that same problem. So, that's not, hydro fracking, yeah, could, could cause problems, I don't know. But, but I think what Brett's pointing out, what you're suggesting here is, is engineering study, and then it also says hydro fracking, so it's not clear that they're two separate items.
Can we make it clear that it's two separate items?
Sure. Is it two separate items?
Thank you.
And so the request would be to ban hydro fracking within a certain zone, or?
Limited residential shoreline.
A whole zone, or? Why not in other shoreline zones?
Yeah, but it wouldn't, so it wouldn't just be for subdivisions, that would be anybody?
Right.
Even resident, residential, yeah.
Yeah, so, like, you know, somebody just wants to build a house on the shore in the limited residential shoreline zone would have to refrain from hydro fracking?
Correct. Even a current, maybe even someone that lives here now, their well stuff, stuff's producing, they can hydro frac to fix, to fix that, that's it, the property's, that's it. Yeah, okay. I do, I do wonder why we say, we talk about, talk about the need for, for some kind of assessment, it doesn't say when.
Under Article 8, general standards?
It's actually in the subdivision.
In subdivision, yeah.
If you look under submissions, SLOD addresses it, you're cute. Evidence of adequate groundwater supply equally requested by the working, submitted by a local or a hydro.
Okay, so we would, we would decide on a case-by-case basis whether to require that backup? Okay. I suppose, what's, what's the difference between an engineering study and a?
Hydro geol?
Yeah, what is that?
Isn't the hydro geologist an engineer that deals with water?
I think that's what it is, right? Impact on groundwater, showing the basis of, in projection of a subdivision's impact on groundwater phosphate concentrations, a map showing for subdivisions, a little watershed of a lake, impacting groundwater phosphate concentrations. Isn't that just like? Isn't that related to like the sewer? In Septic?
What are you looking at, I'm sorry?
I'm looking at the, the, when we ask for a hydrogeologic assessment, it says impact on groundwater, it's not really adequacy of groundwater, underwater supply. You know, it talks about there's a centralized system, it's gonna comply with state rules, it talks about ponds and hydrations, it doesn't really get into.
Let's move on from here. Come back to that, okay? Estate cultural natural value, oh, no, traffic, sorry. In addition to meeting town road construction standards within the subdivision, a traffic study prepared by an engineering firm qualified in this discipline to address the potential traffic impact on town roads leading to the subdivision, mitigation of the predicted traffic impact shall be the sole responsibility of the applicant. This report shall be appended to the application. Well, this, a four lot, four houses in a subdivision is not a Walmart. How much extra, you know, we asked for traffic studies, and, and traffic numbers predict a traffic flow, but what you're asking here is that if, and you don't state where, what, what the threshold is, but apparently you're saying at a certain threshold, the developer would then have to mitigate traffic on town roads somehow? What, what are, what are you getting at specifically?
So, if you, if you, let's go back to the, what triggered all of this, which was the Lopez Point proposal. Now, the developer for that 11-lot subdivision would have been required to have the roads internal to the subdivision meet town standards. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but if you look at the road leading to that area, I mean, Lopez Point Road is, is really inadequate for even the traffic that's on it now.
You mean the town road? The town road?
The town road, right.
So, would that be the town's responsibility to, to bring it up into compliance?
Well, what I'm proposing is it would not be the town's responsibility, it'd be the responsibility of the developer.
I think that's ridiculous.
I do too.
Okay. I, I'm old enough, I'm old enough to remember.
The town should actually look at the roads, and if the, if the don't meet those town standards, then the town should take action and bring them up to the standard.
Right, but I mean, we have the individuals do, do traffic, I mean, studies and stuff.
Well, I, see, I'm old enough to remember when, when the Bangor Mall got built, you remember when, before the Bangor Mall was, there was a cow pasture, remember that?
No, I don't.
It was basically a cow pasture.
You're gone.
Did you call me on it again? Anyway. And so the developer of the Bangor Mall.
Maybe Myrick Street in Elsor, it's a better example.
Well, okay, but the, the developer of the Bangor Mall, I clearly remember, was required by the state to change the roads all around that area and have access to the interstate.
Well, I think that's a little different, talking about the Bangor Mall and talking about a four-house subdivision.
I don't know, it's different, it's, I think it's a similar situation.
I don't.
With four houses?
Four, four houses compared to a mall? I mean, you're top, four houses, you're talking, you know, eight cars if there's a husband and wife and they both work, the Bangor Mall, you're talking about hundreds of cars coming and going.
That's where an engineering study would tell you, but if the engineering study.
Don't need an engineer to figure that out.
No, okay.
We do ask for.
We do, yes, we do.
We have trip generations, we use Institute of Tri, Institute of Transportation Engineers' common trip generation rates, and engineers who come to us with a a subdivision proposal, they develop that information, or they have that information and supply to us, and we go by that. And you're saying that within a subdivision, the roads should be up to town standards, is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding.
I mean, is that what you're proposing? I mean, is that what you're proposing?
Sorry?
Is that what you're proposing? That, that within the subdivision itself, that the road should be up to town standards?
Is that not true now?
Uh, I think it is to a certain point. It depends on the actual subdivision. Where did I, I saw that earlier today.
I believe there's a reference to the road leading to the subdivision in one of the ordinances, and I believe it's the subdivision ordinance, but it doesn't require anything outside of the road leading to the subdivision. There is a reference to that in the ordinance.
There's roads and storm design and construction standards.
Yeah. The board shall not approve any subdivision plan which has a road or roads which are intended for town acceptance unless the proposed roads and the storm water management systems are designed in accordance with the road ordinance of the town of Tremont. So if they're not going to be accepted and maintained by the town, why would they have to be up to town standards?
Well, I guess, it's a good point. I didn't, didn't pick up on that.
Okay.
So if they, they don't want the roads accepted, then they can do whatever they want, I guess.
Well, we have...
I'm sure there's a bunch of subdivisions in this town that, that don't have, earn up to town standards.
But we have standards that they have to go by.
Yeah.
You can't just build anything you want.
Right.
Like a path?
Yeah.
Or a trail.
Trail.
Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. The project will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, et cetera. A review, A, a review and report of the subdivision for the purposes of identifying archaeological significant sites shall be prepared by an individual or firm approved by the Maine Historic Preservation Commission and appended to the application. B, public access to vistas and shoreline shall be given consideration as part of the application. Okay, I'm gonna go with B first. If I own a piece of land, why should I allow, allow to, uh, public access?
That would be sure.
And how would you even? What standard would you use? Right now, when we do a subdivision, we do look at the, uh, whether there are any historic or archaeological, archaeological, significant, archaeological sites. Uh, we use, as according, according to our ordinances, we use the latest comprehensive plan, which you, Peter, you were on, Pete, you were on the comprehensive plan committee. You know, we went through that whole thing where we did go with the Maine Historic, uh, commission to look at those sites which are in that document, correct? So why would you need something different? Why would somebody, a developer or somebody just wants to split off a few lots for family members' sake, have to go through all this trouble?
Has, has the language been changed to reflect the comprehensive plan?
It's always been in there since I've been on the board.
In the comprehensive plan or in the ordinance?
In the ordinance.
Great.
You guys did look at the ordinance when you compiled this, right?
Yeah, we did. We also looked at the suggestions by the CEO here as well.
Were members, any other thoughts on that? Okay. Uh, let's see. Conformity with the local ordinances and plans, that's already in the ordinance. Flood areas. Sea level rise will affect both the aesthetic and practical aspects of the shoreline. Subdivision application should take into consideration the changing shoreline and implications of more intensive storms. Applicants should take care to have the most recent and up-to-date FEMA flood maps when developing a subdivision. Area, any area within the most recent FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain area shall not be included in the determining lot size. FEMA may not be around under the current administration, you know that much, right?
Isn't that what number thirteen does?
What's that?
Isn't that what thirteen does in, under article?
Uh, subdivision article two A thirteen.
What areas?
Yeah, uh, two A thirteen.
It's twenty-three.
Two A thirteen, flood areas. Says based on the Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood boundary and floodway maps and flood insurance rate maps and information presented by the applicant, whether the subdivision is in a flood-prone area. Doesn't make sense, it's sentence, but. If the subdivision or any part of it is in such an area, the subdivider shall determine the one-hundred-year flood elevation and flood hazard boundaries within the subdivision. The proposed subdivision plan must include a condition of plan approval requiring that principal structures in subdivision be constructed with their lowest floor, including the basement, at least one foot above the hundred-year flood elevation.
I think it pretty much sums it up.
Does that cover what you're asking?
It may not, and, uh, I know there was Sarah, Sarah's here, and there was a very good presentation by the Sustainability Committee a couple of weeks ago showing the changing FEMA, or the projected changing FEMA floodplain maps. So, I don't know if you wanna speak to that at all, but...
There's, there's kind of two good of maps, though, just to clarify. There's the FEMA, which I've got right here. The FEMA flood firm map that shows that one-hundred-year, um, location of shoreline, I guess you'd say. Then there's also the Maine Geological Survey, um, what is it? The map that are more of a bathtub, the, the hat, the highest astronomical tide, shows sea level rise, that kind of thing. We're not talking about that. Is, would be great if we could talk about that, but that's the future. We are very concerned about that highest astronomical tide. But that map is more of a, a bathtub, look at it by the Maine Geological Survey, meaning that they use mathematical estimations to show where that's going to be rising in the next ten years, fifty years, hundred years, and so forth. That, we are, we looked at that. But the, um, the FEMA flood maps right now show, and this is not a bathtub model, this is the actual, um, depths of shoreline. I mean, you can put the contour lines right on here so you know exactly where the shoreline is at every point around Lopez Point and anywhere else in Tremont. Um, and so that's what we talked about with the Sue Baker, the state flood, um, management, manager. Floodplain, excuse me, the state floodplain manager.
Angie, I see you recommended, uh, modifying this to the requirements of the floodplain management ordinance?
I looked at that section that you have already, and I think it's not great. Instead of putting in standards there, I think it should refer to the floodplain ordinance, just because not all development has to comply with that one foot above the base plate elevation. It depends on a lot of different things. So I would recommend, and it doesn't have to be part of this, but at some point, we clean that up a little bit to refer to the actual ordinance where the standards are. And I think it's not major, but it's something.
Sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, I thought you were done.
I'm sorry, I, I had an afterthought. Did you all want to see this? Do you all wanna see it? Go bring it up.
It's a FEMA map, right?
It is, but it shows the one-hundred.
Which is what our ordinance says we're supposed to look at.
Okay, I just thought I wanted to see the, the one-hundred.
Yeah. And so to move that into the floodplain ordinance, what would that require?
Well, it's already in the floodplain ordinance, so I think you would simply say that a subdivision has to show you where is the hundred-year flood, and that they comply with the floodplain management ordinance, rather than saying this is what they have to comply with.
I have no issue with that. Anybody? Down this end? Nope?
I think what you're saying is that the, it references the, a specific requirement about the lowest floor. And, and then it goes on to say a permit must be obtained out of a floodplain management ordinance for the town of Tremont. You're just saying, it probably should just say that.
Right.
Unless the ordinance be for instance.
Yeah.
Do we have a floodplain? I was just looking for that. Do we actually have one?
Yeah, we do, although I marked a mine old. I don't, so I don't know what that means. This is, uh, top to town meeting eight twenty-two sixteen. What are you looking at?
I have twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, two thirteen, twenty-twenty.
Maybe you could be so kind when you're, in your free time to make me a current one.
Okay, yeah, July, July fourteen, twenty-twenty.
You have the old one too?
Well, I, this, it's online.
Oh.
Hold it, hold it, say. Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, that makes sense.
What about the issue of excluding the lot, like the lot size piece? Is that how, is that how we do it now, or? I don't, I don't know.
It's not how you do it now? And I think that's, um, you know, in our update conversation. I think that's one of the things the Sustainability Committee would like to have you consider is when looking at lot sizes, you don't use that area that's in the floodplain for lot area calculations.
Those are tough ones, because I don't know what's in market, like, I don't know what other towns do. And I suspect, I also don't know, like, I don't know what the impact is, and that, that could substantially impact, um, you know.
Viable lots?
Land rights, yeah, people who've owned for a long time. So I don't know what, it'd be good, it'd be interesting to see, to understand what the impact would be. But, yeah, okay.
And I had actually mentioned that to the group too, that I think it's important that we look at data and see what the impacts could be before we just say that's a good change to make. Because I think it was important to know, are you gonna make nonconformity out of existing properties?
So that's something...
I'll throw this out there, I don't think it's true, but I'll throw it out there. I always, partly feels like, well, if an insurer is willing to write a policy on it, then, eh, but I don't, you know. Like, if an insurer is willing to underwrite, you know, that, then, okay, but anyway, yeah.
There's also if you're dumb enough to build a floodplain, you get what you deserve, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Sarah?
I'm gonna show you this just because I want you to see that individual properties are here located so you actually know exactly which owners will be affected by, this is the hundred-year.
Hundred-year flood, so happens to be a hundred-year.
Yeah, which is now the one and ten-year flood.
Yeah.
Um, so you can, sorry, I'm... Well, I get it a little farther out, so you can see more of it. No, I'm sorry, I just want to go on my end. This is what makes it crazy about MacBooks. Um, let me go back a little bit. Okay, just so you can see, sorry, for everybody to see. So you can actually see the specific home or building locations that will be or not affected on the...
And where is that?
This is Lopez Point right now, but I mean, you can go anywhere. In Tremont, there are a lot here.
Yeah.
FEMA firm map.
You know, something like that's gonna have to be a full-blown hearing, town input, public input. And you, if you go renders lots like worthless.
But what if, what if Trump gets rid of FEMA, then what happens?
Well, yeah, I'm not gonna go down there, right? It's not gonna happen, but...
Could happen.
What do you recommend, Angie?
Looking at it.
Looking at it?
Yeah, um...
But who would do that?
As far as like gathering data, or just?
And making a recommend, you know, the...
I think you would, you would wanna do it with, you know, like, we had Sue Baker from the Floodplain Management Program attend. She's a great resource, she's very knowledgeable. It's helpful to know whether, what are other communities doing? What does she recommend because she knows the floodplain management programs so well? You know, we don't wanna do something that's gonna come back and bite us later either, so. I think you'd wanna try to gather as many of those resources as possible to...
So it's not gonna happen overnight. We'll have to take our, okay. Yeah, I think it's wise to look at that carefully.
Yeah, and I think we'd rather take a little bit longer to do it properly than to get something through and then find out that it was...
Going back, what were we stuck on? The water thing? Hydrofracking?
Hydrofracking.
Yeah, I, you know, I was looking at that some more. It is interesting to me that we, um, we, let's see if I can find that, I'm looking at it again here. We do require, or we, see, hold on. We do talk about that geological s- study, or, let's see here. And it just kinda says when, it says like, when required, you know, it will address certain things. You know, just nearby a lake, phosphate impact. So my, you know, my thinking was, well, I, I don't know, we got to the point in Lopez Point where we, did we get to that? We didn't get to that.
No, no, they, they, all they did was come with pre-application.
Yes, sufficient wat- one of the standards is obviously sufficient water available for reasonable foreseeable needs of the subdivision. And then there is discussion, um, somewhere in here, lost it, about, um, when we might do that, you know, so you could, sort of two ways of thinking about it. It's either gonna be handled as part of the feedback we get from a butters, um, when there's a real concern, yeah, okay, so evidence maybe requested by the board shall be submitted by a well driller or hydrogeologist, so it's under like, is that? Submission, B submission, sub three, preliminary plan, it goes all the way down to like, Q, it's on page eleven. It's on page 11.
Of the subdivision?
Uh, yes.
11 of 33.
Yeah, 11 of 33. It says maybe requested by the board, shall be submitted by the board. So I think, you know, you could either, we could say it's required in situations, unless waived or something, and, and, you know, when it's in limited residence or shoreline, if you think that in all cases, that we would require that, or you let it ride the way it is, and it's going to get raised as part of the, that process. And it's something, it is a tool that we have. And I think the, you know, the evidence by a hydrogeologist would be the, would be an engineer. So it's.
It's kind of what we asked for, I mean, take hydro fracking out of this.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, I mean, we, we do ask for that.
We can.
Yeah.
We, we can, we can ask for evidence. I, like, I don't know, we didn't get to that point, and would we have required one for?
Hydrogeologist or a well driller?
We all wanted, we said, sure.
It was like 11 lots on like 20-some acres for?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, we probably, we might have, I don't know. It's, it's a tool we have, it's just not required.
Depending what they were going to do, were they going to go with one well, or serve all the lots, or whatever.
Right, yeah, didn't get that far.
Yeah, didn't get that far with that one. So the question is, is what we have in the ordinance good enough?
It's certainly there, I mean, I feel like if the process is working and people have noticed that there's concern, that the concern will be raised. And, you know, I don't, I don't view that as a huge barrier for, you know, it's, for a developer, it's not, I don't think that's going to be a hugely expensive report, you know, they'll have to do it, you know, and, so I don't.
Just like all the other reports, they have to do.
That's right.
Waterlands and.
And so I, you know, whether, do you require it? I don't, I don't know. You know, every time? Because there might be some where we just, it's not, you know, it's, I don't know, that's, to me, that's the question.
Hydro fracking is going to increase the chance of saltwater getting into the well.
Yeah, hydro fracking, I don't know what to do with that. I mean, I get it, but I don't know, I don't know the word, like, I don't know the word.
Why would someone do it? I mean, as an owner of a piece of property, why would I choose in this specific, you know, zone, take a chance of spending the money to have something hydrofract that would give me a greater chance of getting saltwater in mine?
I, I don't know, it's a practical issue. I mean, I, what I, I don't know that we, as a board, can, can we say that people can't hydrofract a well? Is that something, is that authority we have? Like, I just don't know.
So the question is, what it?
It feels like a service that you can, if your well's not working right.
Is it only going to affect one well, the owner's well, property owner's well? Or could the hydro fracking allow for saltwater incursion into other wells?
It could.
In the area, and that's, it could, I think, yeah.
That was the issue that the geologists raised.
Yeah.
You know, you, in the shoreline zone, you've got a series of wells, and that could happen.
Is anybody aware of anybody using hydro fracking around here? Yes, sir?
You know, while you're talking about that, I think it brings up a really good point. And if you're going to do that, maybe a distance around existing wells would be a good idea, too. I mean, if you're going to implement hydro fracking, you know, so you can't do it with an X number of feet over, you know, other property's wells.
You mean outside of the limited residential shoreline?
You know, maybe for the entire town would make sense.
Do other towns do that? I don't have no idea.
I don't know, but I mean, basically what you do, you put an explosive charge down a well and crack the rocks up. Or, you know, I'm assuming it's explosive, you probably know better than I do.
I think it's just pressure rocks.
Yeah.
I thought it was just pressure rocks.
Right.
Well, it must be a lot of pressure to crack the rocks. Anyway, you're fracturing the rocks, introducing new cracks. Seems so if there's someone else's well nearby, it could affect that, too. So, I mean, if you're addressing it, it would kind of make sense not just a limited, you know, shoreline.
Just no hydro fracking period? Or within a certain distance of wells?
Yeah, I mean, if you're 300 feet away from someone else's well, probably it's going to be fine, but, you know, if the well's 25 feet from where you're going to.
How do you police that? I mean, what are you going to, you can't.
You never know, somebody came and did it.
You've got to be so far away from septic and so far away from, you know, your.
Angie, at Bar Harbor, is there anything about hydro fracking?
No.
Okay.
We don't regulate wells, we don't permit wells, so I'm not really sure we have a whole lot of enforcement capabilities to prohibit people from doing that.
I, I do know M D I, while I was doing like studies on wells in other ways, PFAS, and how people might, next to each other, do they have PFAS similar to their neighbor?
Sure, we, we got, the landfill here is flooded, wells all along, flatiron right there.
Which is just similar, but it's different.
And this building, too. Is there something we haven't discussed here?
I don't think so. That was the only thing we.
So, we would like to take a look at moving that one section of subdivision ordinance into the floodplain ordinance, correct?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, but we want to, okay, you need a motion to that effect, Angie?
I mean, you can make one if you want, I can just bring some language back, and then we can talk about it.
What are you thinking?
I think just wait till next meeting.
What's that?
Let her research it and bring something back to us.
We'll hold on to that.
Okay. And the, what was the other thing? There was another thing there.
Well, but, you know, the lot size?
Yeah, lot size, yeah.
I feel like that's like a long range.
Yeah, look at that.
I think you would, we could talk about that.
Hydro fracking. I mean, I'm not against it, but, I mean, like Kevin kind of had a point, you know, you're going to mess up somebody else's well. But saltwater incursion is only going to happen in the, in the shoreline zone, so, all shoreline zones.
Probably depends on whether you're cracking the rock or not. You're one more active, that would be the apple risk, though.
Yeah, so.
I think the biggest thing that happens is, it's kind of, you know, it's perhaps you, when you start breaking the rock up, you're really not sure what's going to happen. That, you know, that's what you run into.
Yeah.
We're also doing studies that there's saltwater is running underneath the freshwater aquifers, and as we get more pressure, the sea level rise and just these storm surges and all that, it will then cause more pressure. That's why the shore zone, or the places near the shore are so crucial, and in more danger, that's saltwater intrusion.
What, do you want to discuss that at the next meeting, too, or do you want to just?
Discuss what?
Hydro fracking.
Hydro fracking.
I, I'd be curious to know whether, is there any town in the state of Maine that tries to regulate or control hydro fracking? Because I just don't know how you.
Yeah, I mean, you have a point, how do you police it? Well, that's why we have a code enforcement officer.
Has anyone done it?
I, I've never heard of anybody doing it around here. I, I saw, when I looked online, I saw in New Hampshire, they were doing it in places, but.
My mother had a pounded well, so that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They pounded it instead of drilling it.
That was the old-fashioned way, yeah.
But that wasn't hydro fracking, so.
Dick Black, when he built his new house right across from the cemetery, he wanted a pounded well, and he found someone that would do it.
Yeah, Mom had one done. Yeah, the one in Pretty Matches, the high C is a pounded well.
Well, let's explore that a little more, okay? I'm not opposed to banning it, if it makes sense.
You got, the hydro fracking association is not going to be happy.
At least you're not going after gas, oil, right?
We can call, call a well driller, call John Gilbit and ask him, does anybody hydrofrack around here?
Do the Jones boys do it?
Asa, you know, I, I think Asa, I think they just drill.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll look into that a little more. Folks who, friends there of Lopez Point, you want to say anything else, or any comments?
Sure, I, I want to thank Angie for her time last week, helping get some things straightened out in my mind as to how this works. It was a very pleasant conversation, and she produced an excellent document for you folks. And also thank you for your good questions and pointing out some of the errors of my ways, I guess. And thanks for taking a look at this.
Feel free to point out my errors any time you want.
I'll, I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, we've got a couple of things we'll discuss from this at our next meeting. Angie, you all said on that, and?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, folks.
Get a new calendar on the wall.
Yeah, that was pointed out earlier, yeah. Yeah. I thought I could read it from here, but. Okay, moving on to new business, I guess. Angie, you're going to update us on this January 16th Sustainability Committee meeting?
Yeah, I think I said most of it in my memo to you. I attended their meeting, it was very informative, it was interesting to see some of the topics that they're discussing as they're related to the ordinance and subdivision ordinance and floodplain ordinance. And so I just thought it would be good for you all to know that they're working on some of these issues, and I expect you'll see something at some point, some recommendations for some amendments. Like I said, I'd like to continue attending their meeting and being a resource to them and just to, you know, make sure we're all on the same page about some of the amendments as they move forward. Like I said, you know, it's important that there's no conflicts from one ordinance to another, and that things are consistent with the con plan, and that, you know, you don't make any unintended consequences with any of our changes.
Okay, so, we can expect something in writing at some point from them?
We haven't got that far, but I would assume yes, that we.
Okay. Because I think we would prefer to see something written down on paper, rather than just having someone come in and discuss them with us. Thank you. Any other, anybody have any things? Beth, you already have your coat on.
Well, I got to chill. I think it was from the door. I'm cold-blooded.
I get, I get that at home all the time, because I always want to heat up higher than she does. Set date for the next meeting, February 11th. Take a motion to that effect?
I'll take a motion, the next meeting will be February 11th, 2025, Harvey Kelly Meeting Room, 6:00 P.M.
I will second that.
Motion to second on the table to set the date for next meeting for February 11th, 6:00 P.M., right here, Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. All in favor? Okay. Motion to adjourn, what's the time? 7:24.
Second.
A motion to adjourn at 7:24, all in favor? Thank you, folks.
You know, I burst right out loud when I read that.
You what?
I burst right out loud.
I couldn't believe it.
That town, the town of.